I would like to call the May third, two thousand and sixteen, meeting of the Riverton City Finance Committee to order at six thirty P M. The Chair would entertain a motion for the consideration of claims.
Consideration of crimes, Mr. Chairman, to be paid in the amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents. Checks written for payroll and liabilities for April fifteenth in the amount of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-eight cents. Manual checks written in the amount of twenty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-three cents for a total of five hundred and twenty-three thousand, thirty-four dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions?
No, I've reviewed. I have none.
No.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And then on to contract for services.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So, before you, I put a spreadsheet in front of you that's a little bit different than the one you have in your packet. Staff is recommending a ten percent reduction on contract for services. As you go through here, now, some people have already asked for less, so some of them may not be, meet that ten percent. In other cases, they've met it in even more. And so, when you look at Good Samaritan and injury prevention, they would have been less than the thousand, but that's what they were requesting. So, if you, if you look all the way to the top, ten, ten percent reduction on use services would be twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred. The fire department would be nine thousand instead of ten thousand. Volunteers of America, one hundred thousand, eight hundred. Good Samaritan, four thousand. Now, there's a little caveat on that. They offered a different solution in that we could pay their utility bills. Not, not gas and electricity, but the city utility bills. So, that'd be water, sewer, and sanitation in lieu of getting payment. And so, that would help us if we wanted to do that. I, I ran a whole year, they have, they have two accounts, because they have two addresses. And the, the total for the, for the year was two thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars. And so, you can either say we're just gonna give four thousand in cash, or we're gonna have twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars in utility payments, and then make it up the rest in cash. If, if you choose to do that. Pause would be...
Your Honor, do we need a motion for that?
Well, you will at the end.
We just need an asterisk.
Yeah.
Okay.
Pause would be thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five. Children's advocacy is four thousand, fifty. One thing that Councilman Canaan brought up, as you know, when, we used to give them thirty-five hundred. And then, when they moved to town, when they actually had a spot here in town for us to go to, we, we bumped that to forty-five hundred, because we felt like that helped with overtime in the police department, and gas, and all those things. So, you know, there may be a recommendation to bump them back down to the thirty-five hundred. Chamber of Commerce, fifteen thousand, eight hundred and three. Injury prevention, five thousand. And our recreation, one hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred. And that's for a total of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight. So, what we're looking for is the recommendation from the, from the Finance Committee, then that would be forwarded on to the Council.
And, and ma'am, I'll, I'll make the recommendation, excuse me, that we do what the Good Samaritan, that we do with Mr. Weaver was saying, is that cover portion of their utility bills, and then make up the rest of it in cash. I would recommend that we do take child advocacy down, back to thirty-five hundred, again, since we're back to sending our guys to Casper. And that's no different than where they were in fourteen and fifteen. But I would like to recommend that we take the volunteer fire department to a thousand.
You mean a ten thousand?
Ten thousand, excuse me. Use part of that child advocacy and stuff to bring them back up. I think, again, they're one of those types of organizations that you truly, truly can't live without, so.
Well, it's, I think you're, you're labeling those essential services. And I know I...
I mean, it'd be, I, I agree with you. You're just like our police department.
Well, yeah, I'm not gonna go around with, well, I'm sorry, but three tires is all we can afford per car.
So, I, I think that's what they asked for, and I think that's easy to do.
Yep.
So, those would be my three, three recommendations, just to change the, the ten percent reduction that Mr. Weaver gave us, just those three adjustments.
So then, do you want, so for the Good Samaritans, do you wanna just give them, if their water was two thousand, two hundred and fifty-two, correct? So, if you minus that from the thirty-four, that's one thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight. Is that what you want?
Yeah, just like Mr. Weaver was saying, just bring...
The rest would be in cash.
And then, yeah.
The part would be the...
Would be the utilities.
Utilities. Up to the four thousand.
Okay, so can I ask a question real fast? What is supplemental funding? Like, what's the actual definition of that?
That's money that we get from the state, that they get off of mineral royalties and monies they get. It's a fairly complicated equation. But, mon, that's the monies, the direct distribution money that we got from the state was like one point one million dollars. And so, that money, we've always set aside for contract for services and capital projects. We never put that to operations, because you can never count on the money.
So, how much is in that account right now?
Well, this year, we're receiving one million, one hundred and eighty-two thousand. And that goes for contract for services and capital in the general fund. So, whatever we have left over in, in, from this, goes to capital projects. And in our case for this year, what we're planning to do is, anything we have left over that, we're gonna earmark towards North Federal for next year for a stormwater project. And we're gonna need sizable amount of money.
Which we don't know what that'll mean, but we know we'll just need more.
That's right.
So then...
And, and the reason that behind all this is, and we haven't disclosed this to everybody, but, I mean, the, the city's obviously in a downturn. We're having to do major cuts. We felt like if we're taking cuts, then contract for services should take cuts. And that's the reason behind all of it.
But isn't there gonna be a leftover surplus? Or am I wrong?
Well, there's, there's monies left over, but it will go to capital.
But that's gonna go to North Federal. We had two thou, we had two hundred thousand last year that we put to North Federal from last year's budget.
So then, how do we wanna rewrite it? Do we just wanna say, because we just have to vote on the motion then?
Well, you just put a motion.
I know, I need a second. He made the motion, so I need you to second it, so that we can vote on it, and then we can go ahead.
I don't know if I want to.
Okay.
Second.
Thanks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, uh, motion passes. So... Sorry. Um, so then, is there any further business?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Meaning adjourned.
I now call the May third, two thousand and sixteen, regular council meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at seven P M. Would Councilmember Canaan lead us in the pledge of allegiance? And after that, would Councilmember Christianson lead us in prayer? Peterson.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we are grateful for this, this night that we had to be able to come together as a city council, and to be able to discuss the needs of this great city that we live in. We are also grateful for the, the moisture that we received, and the warm weather that we received the last couple of days. We ask you to please watch over this great city, that we will be able to have thy, the inspiration to be able to make those tough decisions, to be able to continue to lead and guide, and to be able to serve the people of this great community. Heavenly Father, we ask you to please watch over us, that we'll be able to have thy guidance with us at all times. And we ask for these saints in his name. Amen.
Amen.
Would the city secretary please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Mar, Nan.
Here.
Councilmember Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
I'm President, declare that we have a quorum. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda with the addition of the Riverview Road Asphalt Project Discussion after item number fourteen.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. The next item is communications from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium. Identify yourselves for the record.
My name is George Wright. I'm representing the Central Wyoming Skateboard Association. We had a directors and officials meeting on Monday night, and determined, after studying the five different models on computer of weather forecasting, that next Saturday of, the day we chose for our grand opening, it's gonna be like last Saturday. Cold, wet. And, because we want a good attendance from everyone, we decided to postpone our grand opening. I mailed letters to most of the sponsors and people really interested, as well as the city. Got those in the mail today. We've decided that June eighteenth, Saturday, June eighteenth, at eleven o'clock, we'll have the rescheduled grand opening. I've been to park all day today. We set up the donor wall, the sponsor wall. It's gorgeous. It's so exciting. But we've got it covered with tops and tarps and strapped down, so nobody will see it till we unveil it at the opening. And so, the program go on as usual, and we're sorry about the delay. We'd love to have it this Saturday, but it's silly to have it in bad weather. People will just not, not come, and we want a good turnout. Surprising how many people know of the Spate Park, but have not really been there individually, physically, and looked at it, and see what really is there. So, this is just a announcement about the postponement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. Appreciate that. My, my grandkids moved to Washington, and, you know, about a year ago, and, and so they came to visit a couple of weeks ago, and they brought their skateboards, just so that they could try that out. Okay? Would the Finance Director please read the consent agenda, items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, April nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen, regular council meeting. Approval of minutes, May third, two thousand and sixteen, Finance Committee meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee recommendations, May third, two thousand and sixteen.
Thank you. Are there any other items that need further discussion?
Your Honor.
Mm-hmm.
The Finance Committee would like for the bills to be paid in the amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents. Checks written for payroll liability for four, fifteen of sixteen, in the amount of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-eight cents. Manual checks in the amount of twenty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-three cents, for a total of five hundred and twenty-three thousand, thirty-four dollars and eighty cents. And then, we would, um, contracts for services were discussed, and recommendations are to waive the Good Samaritan's city utilities in the amount of two thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars, and reduce funding to one thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. Reduce children's advocacy by five hundred and fifty dollars, and increase Riverton Volunteer Fire Departments, and give full amount requested of ten thousand dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of consent agenda.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion. We approve the consent, consent agenda, second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bailey.
I guess I have a question regarding the contract for services. I know we've cut it about ten percent in that area. Is that sort of what we're looking at, as an overall cut for the rest of the budget, you think? I mean, we're sort of doing this a little ahead of the rest of the items that we have to deal with, so.
Oh, Your Honor.
Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, that's, that's about right. It, it varies either higher or lower than that, but that's, that's about what we're looking at cutting.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Okay, the next item is a proclamation on Building Safety Month, and I'll read that. Whereas Building Safety Month is a public awareness campaign that reinforces the need for adoption of modern model building codes, a strong and efficient system of code enforcement, and a well-trained professional workforce to create and maintain safe, efficient, and resilient structures. And, whereas building safety and fire prevention officials, electrical safety officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, labors, and others in the construction industry work to construct sound buildings safely. And, whereas local, state, and federal officials collaborate to create and implement codes to protect people in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, and play. And, whereas the international codes are the most widely adopted building safety, energy, and fire prevention codes in the nation, and are used by most U.S. cities, counties, and states. And, whereas the city of Riverton has adopted these codes for buildings, fire prevention, and energy efficiency, to give us confidence that our structures are safe, sound, and to ensure buildings, buildings' safety is a critical component of personal and public safety, the protection, the protection of property and our economic well-being. And, whereas Building Safety Month is cosponsored by the Wyoming Conference of Building Officials and the International Council, Code Council, which promulgate the most widely adopted building safety, fire, prevention, and energy codes in the nation, and wants to remind the public about the critical role of our communities' largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings. And, whereas Building Safety Month two thousand and sixteen encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that places where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe and sustainable, and recognizes that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies in protecting life and property. Now, therefore, I, John L. Baker, Mayor of the City of Riverton, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim May two thousand and sixteen as Building Safety Month. Well, I thought it was over that cough. But I can see that, just a little bit of talking, and I'm finished. The next thing that we have is Injury Prevention Resources Presentation by Noel Cooper. Mr. Cooper.
Uh, Noel Cooper, Executive Director for Injury Prevention Resources. I definitely wanna take a moment to thank you guys, and apologize for my last scratch off the agenda. I figured, you know, being sick and vomiting in here would be frowned down upon, so I wanted to make sure I didn't do that. So, yeah. My apologies for missing. I'm glad to be here today. I don't feel like I'm gonna vomit, so that's a plus. Just thank you guys for having me and letting me speak on our programs and what we do over at IPR. Thank you to the, the Mayor Baker, and then councilmen, and city staff as well. I know a lot of you guys help with some of our programs as well, so. Just to, I try to every year at least get in here and do a quick overview of what we do as an agency. Best way to describe ourselves are a nonprofit that is rooted out of highway safety or roadway safety. You know, the, the biggest thing that we know is if you don't drink and drive, you wear a seatbelt, you don't text and drive, you put the little ones in car seats. And, obviously, as a pedestrian, you know, keep, keep aware of your surroundings. We know we can save a lot of lives if we can get people to adopt those, and embrace those, those behaviors and policies. I provided you guys a list of, of just some of our programs. I, I won't go through all of them, I promise, because we'll be here a long time if we do. You know, first on there is, is, and by all means, any questions, just, you know, raise a hand, throw something at me, whatever you need to do to get my attention. We, we just recently, I'll jump down this list a little bit and jump around. We had the Life For You Ready Program down at the fairgrounds. And that is a education, high-risk decision and education for sixth graders. We had all of the, the Riverton sixth grade students there, and they went through simulated party scenarios, understandings of what can happen if you choose to use drugs and alcohol. Boy, we had a lot of really good partners, everyone from, you know, our county attorneys, to our fire departments, to RPD, to local PDs throughout the whole county, Sheriff's Office. I can just keep going on and on. CES to Sage West, some help from the folks at PMO. You know, we, we just had a ton of partners there, and, and the whole goal of it was to, to get sixth graders to understand if you make high-risk decisions, and you decide to drink, or ride with somebody drinking, or you don't wear seatbelts, there is a lot of different consequences that can stem from that. Also that was touched on was some cyberbullying in education for kids there, some suicide education and prevention methods, understanding of disabilities, clear to a crash scene, to a court scene, to a, a little jail, to ER and EMS. And so, the kids come down there, and they shuffle through the scenarios. Good deterrent. I know that we have a lot of kids that try drugs and alcohol from the first time to sixth to seventh grade, which is terrifying. But we know that if we can get them an understanding of what to look for, what to avoid, we can, we can help make a difference, and help them ideally deter them from using drugs and alcohol at all, or making high-risk decisions like getting in a vehicle with someone drinking, so on and so forth. That was our most recent, we do a, and that one's really focused towards, towards alcohol and drug use. We do a Battle of the Belts every year. Riverton and Lander compete every other year, and it is a seatbelt safety competition. And they, we go to the schools unannounced and do a survey of a hundred people, students and staff and adults pulling in to the parking lots of the high schools. And we do that survey, and then we go into the schools. We do announcements a week long, you know, encouraging seatbelt use. We share the results. We do an assembly if we can get in. We know the school's time is tight. And then we do a post-survey unannounced, and whatever school improves the most, for the, the rate at which they buckle up, gets a championship belt that goes in their trophy case, which is in Lander right now, which is a bummer. I didn't say that out loud, did I? I would like to see it, a competition, and so Riverton will have a chance to defend the belt. It's either the end of this year or early next year. And so, we're, I'm, I'm okay with Lander winning, but I would like to see it be a competition. And so, we're hoping Riverton can, can pick up and really get those kids buckling up to save their lives. We, we, we run car seat inspections and distributions, feels like all the time out of our office. I know we gave away over a hundred and twenty-five child car seats last year, and we were able to not only just give it to a person and, and let them go about their way, we're able to talk to them about seatbelts and the dangers of impaired driving and distracted driving, and teach them how to put those children in the vehicle and in the seats safely. That's an effort that goes on and on. Like I said, about a hundred and twenty-five seats last year, we inspected, I think, close to three hundred, if I look at those numbers again. So, we know that anybody who comes to our office, we can show them how to use a child car seat, show them the importance, and show them what they can do in a vehicle to help keep themselves alive and their family alive. Just finished distracted driving month in April. Did some PSAs. We had some middle schoolers work on, on doing some public service announcement, announcements, and those played over the radio. Working back, we do our safety rodeos every year. We've, we've split and divided the way we do them. It's a education event for K through three. We go into the schools, and we, again, go back through the things, why they need booster seats, why they need seatbelts. We actually dabble into some bike safety and the importance of helmets. We do pedestrian safety education there. And we do some fire prevention education and some water safety at those events, too. We're gonna do Riverton and the counties every other year, and then we'll do Lander and the reservation schools on those other offsetting years. Think the last big effort we had, certainly involving RPD, was during the Super Bowl. We did some, some PSAs and some, some... We did some PSAs and some announcements, radio, County 10, and I think there was some Casper radio stations that played, too. And it was all an anti-drinking and driving campaign, and it really dove into letting people know that we would have enforcement out on every level. And I know all of our law enforcement agencies in Fremont County had an overtime grant to work that weekend and to, you know, try to keep people safe on the roads. Really had great results. We ran it from Friday through Sunday at midnight during the Super Bowl, which obviously there was a lot of partying because a lot of Broncos fans are in this country. But if I remember right, the numbers were over 400 stops made between all of these agencies, every law enforcement agency in Fremont County, and 12 DUIs. And so when you look at that, you know, you're like, oh, 12, that's a lot of DUIs, but not compared to the 400-some stops they made. It's a pretty low percentage, and so we're going to continue to work towards those things and do some education and media. And then also, we do. We do DUI probation out of our office, usually have about 125 clients at any given time, serve over 200 in a year. Great program, 80% complete successfully. Of that 80%, less than 1% come back to us on another DUI. So our recidivism rate for who's coming back to us after they've completed our program is low, very low. And we've been able to see less and less people die on our roadways with high amounts of alcohol in their system, especially when you look at like a 10-year picture. So we keep working tirelessly. We have some other real fun stuff, like bracelets that go on your ankle that can tell if you're consuming alcohol, they can put people on house arrest. So basically, if it has to do with drinking and driving, or seatbelts, or distracted driving, or keeping a kid safe in a vehicle or near a vehicle or on the road, that's our business, that's what we do, and we just hope to keep working forward and save lives, so. And I could tell you guys 50 other things, but those are the highlights for now, if that works for you.
That's great. Thank you for your report. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Cooper? No? We don't. Thank you very much for what you do, okay? I see good work there and I hope it, you know, trickles down to where a lot of people are safer as a result. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is Ordinance Number 16-001 on Third and Final Reading, Purchase, Use, or Possession of Tobacco by Minors. Would the Finance Director please read Ordinance Number 16-001 by Title Longley?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed Ordinance Number 16-001 on Third and Final Reading and Ordinance Amending Title IX, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare, revising Chapter 9.16, Offenses by or Against Minors, Section 9.16.030, Purchase, Use, or Possession of Tobacco by Minors, Prohibited, of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance 16-001 on Third and Final Reading.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 16-001 on Third Reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Larson.
Do we have any representatives from the people that sell this product here?
No.
So no one, no public against it?
No. I don't, you know, I think all the, what I've heard is that all the sellers of vaping devices already, you know, self-regulate and restrict access minors.
Good.
Your Honor. Mr. Bailey?
I would say that I think, if I remember correctly, Chief Broadhead said that they had talked to several, and I know we are one of them, and we have always restricted sale to people that are over 18, so.
Do you card them?
Yes.
All those in favor? Oh, roll call.
Yep.
Roll call. Would the City Secretary please conduct the roll call vote?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember Mike Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Martin Canaan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Kyle Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Sean Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Holly Gibbon.
Yes.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
Yes. Motion passes. The next item is the Wild Link Bid Award. Could we get a report on that from the Chief of Police?
Thank you, Your Honor. So the state, just by way of background, the state has adopted the Wild Link radio system, which is a digitally-trunk radio system for a lot of public access, but law enforcement primarily across the state. We've joined Wild Link, and it took us several years to have a tower built. You might recall that discussion about having a tower built in town. Anyways, the system that drives that is owned by Motorola, leased to the state or sold to the state through them, and they have upgraded the software in Cheyenne that runs the system. We've been notified, we were notified about a year ago, that our system was no longer going to be compatible with the new system as of August of 2016. And so since that time, we've been meeting with the PSCC and trying to find ways to upgrade our system or make a good decision about how to do that. The PSCC had talked about putting that date off, which gave us a little bit of breathing room to try to make a good decision, but they've come back to the August 2016 date as of last fall and then told us that we're either going to have to upgrade our dispatch console system or we're not going to be compatible with them after August. So we put it out for bid recently, those bids came in, we only had one bid that met the requirements of what we asked for, and that bid came in, bless you, at $516,000, and that is a Motorola system. And so that would include the upgrades to our system and make us continue to be compatible with the Wild Link system, and they can have that done by August. So we've applied for a grant that the PSCC, because they heard a lot of complaints, there were 13 dispatch centers around the state that had to be upgraded. Some of them could afford it more readily than others. There are five of us that haven't done that yet, and the PSCC went to the legislature during the budget session and they put some money aside to help us with that. So there's a 50% match available, or up to a 50% match available, not an infinite amount of money, we're competing for some of that money, but we have applied for that grant, and we'll find out Thursday whether we have been awarded any money for that grant or not. So the question for you this evening then is, a couple options on there is that you can authorize that $516,000 purchase, you can authorize it contingent upon some award of grant money through the PSCC's grant, or to refuse to upgrade the system. That refusal to upgrade the system is something that we've talked about, about whether that's a good idea for us to go back to an analog system. What we lose by going back to analog is that our interoperability with other law enforcement agencies goes back to more of a 1970s-style radio system. That's not catastrophic, we worked around it through the 1970s and we can work around it again, but in the post-9/11 world, the term interoperability has become sort of the standard way of doing business. We have the capacity right now through Wild Link, where it happens typically, we've seen it is on missing children. We're able to get all the law enforcement agencies on the same radio channel regardless of agency, and they can have a coordinated response to that. Obviously, that would work during, you know, anything from a terrorist incident, which is the national standard, down to, you know, kidnappings of children, vehicle pursuits that the police are involved in, and those kinds of things. So really, it's a public safety issue. I'm very much against spending this amount of money, but I feel like this is an obligation that we need to maintain, and the funding for that, we're going to have to dig into some of that supplemental funding that comes from the state is what we're talking about, trying to find some funds for that right now, depending on the amount of our portion, and I suppose there always is the option to finance portions of that if that becomes necessary. So it's our recommendation that you approve the bid contingent on whatever you're comfortable with as far as grant funding.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we accept the bid of Wild Link Project contingent on the matching, or do we just open it up for discussion?
Whatever you want it to say.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we accept the bid of Wild Link contingent on a matching donation from the state.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Sure.
Mr. Canaan.
Chief, I noticed in your thing it said that the Motorola console that you had wasn't compatible with the upgrade. Do you have a, do you know off the top of your head what type of console these other folks are using that didn't have to spend the big bucks to have the upgrade go through?
Mr. Mayor, I think that every PSAP, every primary or public safety answering point in the state had to upgrade if they're on Wild Link. There are a number of agencies, particularly on the western side of the state, that Wild Link hasn't reached yet because of the terrain. You know, the east side of the state's been on Wild Link for probably 10 years. We started going to the Wild Link system, buying radios, car radios and portable radios that were compatible, but we didn't actually get onto the Wild Link system until that tower was built, which was about 2012, maybe, 2013. So even though we've had the equipment, we weren't able to go live on Wild Link until fairly recently. So does that answer your question? The PSAPs around the state that are on Wild Link, all of them have had to upgrade, but there are a number of PSAPs, particularly in the west, that have not even joined Wild Link yet.
Okay, that's fine. I misunderstood you when you were saying before that there were only a, I thought you said that there were only a certain number of people that had to spend the big bucks on the upgrade, so.
Mr. Peterson?
Your Honor, with this bid and the, if it does go to the Motorola, does that include some kind of a follow-up? I mean, is it, they come in, they put it in, and they say, "Good luck, we'll see you when you need something," or does that come with a, I don't want to say a warranty, but some kind of a service plan to where, because as we all know, when you put it in your system, there's going to be bugs, there's going to be kinks. Is that covered in that?
Mr. Mayor, there is a one-year warranty with the system. The advantage of using Motorola is that, you know, we're taking Motorola equipment and attaching it or bolting it on to a Motorola system, which is a lot smoother. We had two other companies bid on the project, but neither of them gave us bids that were, the packages were not compatible with what we asked for. Part of that was because they have to bolt on to Motorola, and they have to have Motorola's cooperation to do that. Motorola was very clear with them that they were going to have to pay licensing fees to do that, that they were going to have to have Motorola engineers on site, and then when they said they needed for their bid package, we asked for a complete bid, and that company, it was one company that bid, gave us two different options on bids, so we received three bids, but two of them were not compatible. They couldn't get a response from Motorola of what those fees were going to cost, and they had been estimated between $60,000 and $100,000, which definitely changed the entire, you know, potential of the bid amount. You know, good or bad business is what it is, we're trying to find a solution to our issue, and it is a Motorola system. So, you know, from a personal perspective, I do worry sometimes that, you know, you can buy a Chevy Nova, we start putting mag rims on it and blowers and all kinds of fancy stuff, we still have a Chevy Nova at the bottom of it, and we have to be a little bit careful about putting mag wheels and blowers on a Motorola system and then constantly paying to upkeep that. The Sheriff's Office is going through that right now, they upgraded their system, but they went with an aftermarket IP logger, and that's the piece of equipment that records every phone call, records all the transmission, logs the time of every call, which is important for us, and they went with an aftermarket system, having some issues with it being compatible with Motorola's system, and Motorola's just not that happy to work on or help them find a solution to an aftermarket product. And so while this is expensive, this is the A-plus answer, and if public safety communications are important, which I believe that they are, it's just one of those costs of doing business. I would say, Mr. Mayor, if I could add, that I'm not sure we're going to get a 50% match. That's what's available, up to 50%, but, you know, it is a competitive, and, Mr. Canaan, when I had said 13 PSAPs earlier, I may have not been clear on what I was talking about. In October, when we went to the Public Safety Communications Commission, the PSCC, there were 13 PSAPs that still needed to be upgraded as of October, and there's five left. So all of the other ones, some of the agencies, Cheyenne and Laramie, who've been on Wild Link for some time, they upgraded right at the time that the upgrade was done in Cheyenne, but as of October, there were still 13 of us that needed to upgrade, and all but five of them are completed today.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I have a question. If, the way I understand the motion, it's contingent if we get that grant, what are we going to do if we don't get the grant? So do we need an amendment to pay for the whole thing, or? An amendment to the motion?
Well, if we wanted to make sure that we were going to do the upgrade, even if we didn't get a grant, that's what we'd have to do. The motion right now is that we expect to see some matching money from the state, but it didn't specify a percentage.
And, Your Honor, I believe, I think we're going to get some, I really do. I mean, in talking to a couple of the people that serve on that committee, it looks like we're going to get some, it's just that there's one piece of equipment that they're kind of complaining about, saying, "I don't know if we're going to pay 50% of that," but the rest, I think, we'll get some. So I think we're going to have some matching requirement, we just don't know the entire amount.
Your Honor. Mr. Bailey?
My question would be, budget-wise, would this come out of this year's budget, or do we have any funds available for these capital improvements for the police, for PD? Or are we looking at putting that into next year's budget?
Your Honor.
The same question.
My question exactly, Mr.
This is going to be a next year's budget, and this is some of the money that we got from the state, the supplemental funding that we get from the state that we use for capital, and this is a general fund capital, or for contract for services, and so we'll be all right.
So I guess.
And I would make a motion that we amend the motion to accepting the bid in its entirety without making it preliminary that we get the grant, and then if we get the grant, great, but if not, we need to upgrade anyway.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Okay, so the motion on the floor is to accept this bid of $516,000 for an upgrade on the Wild Link system. Is there any further discussion on that? I guess my comment is that this is half of the state distribution. Quite a gift. Ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. West Pershing Canal Drainage Project Bid Award, Public Works Directors, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The bid and the object before you at this time is our first 1% project for this season. It pertains to, as you mentioned, a drainage and road improvement project on Pershing. This is a topic that was brought up to the Force Committee actually back in July of 2014. This has been going on for two years. And the property owner adjacent to this area, which is 307 West Pershing, brought up a drainage issue and road issue we have on Pershing. Basically, what we face is an incorrect grade in the curb and gutter where when we have surface runoff, rather than having the waters flow in the curb and gutter, it actually sheets across the pan of the curb and gets into the travel lane and flows in the travel lane for a few hundred feet, and then it gets back. and flows in the travel lane for a few hundred feet, and then it gets back in the curb and gutter. So, what we have found is because of that addition of water flowing over the asphalt and then also the freeze thaw that occurs in the wintertime with ice, that we have an accelerated degradation of the asphalt on West Pershing at this location. If you picture it in your mind, it's where the RVID canal crosses West Pershing. Therefore, in working in conjunction with Force, staff has reviewed the situation and prepared plans to improve this drainage problem and also improve the roadway. Last fall, we went out and surveyed this area and then staff developed plans and put together bid packages, which were advertised, excuse me, advertised April 6th and 13th of 2016. Where contractors and suppliers downloaded these plans and specifications. And on April 21st, 2016, bids were opened with the following results. Dave's Asphalt Company of Riverton, Wyoming at $49,320. Jerry Bornhof Construction of Riverton, Wyoming at $59,692. And 71 Construction of Riverton, Wyoming at $38,471. Staff has reviewed the bid results and have found that the lowest bidder is responsive to bid requirements and specifications at the amount of $38,471. I do wanna mention that staff's engineer's estimate on this project was $40,000. Currently, this project will come out of the 1% fund. We have approximately $1.9 million in available funds in the 1% account after subtracting our current obligations. So, we do have the funds in this account for this project and staff recommends that the city council award this project, the West Pershing Canal Drainage, 71 Construction at $38,471. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the West Pershing Canal Drainage Project to 71 Construction.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. The next item this evening is renaming of residential zoning designations, a discussion. Community Development Directors report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is a, an item that council asked us about quite some time ago. And it came about when we were discussing changing the residential B zone. At the same time, we wanted to change the names, the zoning designations of residential zones, partly because at this point in time, we have residential A, B, and C, and then our commercial are designated as Cs. And it was, it was a little confusing a lot of times when people had residential C, they thought they were in a commercial zone and kind of some vice versa. So, the Planning Commission and staff have been looking at all these. At this point in time, what we would like to do is just change the names of those zoning designations. As we were going through and trying to just make some of those changes in uses on the residential B zone and the number of units that were allowed and all that, and change the names at the same time, we, it's very confusing. 'Cause we would say, "Okay, that's residential B, but it's going to be a resident, or a R3, or an R2." It was just confusing. So, we figured at this point in time, if we just changed the names, we can put that on our new map and change like the BGA would be RA, A would be R1, B R2, C R4, and like it shows on this chart here. And then it would be much easier then to go back and make the changes in the zones that we need to. When we make some of those changes in the uses, then we will have to have some public hearings. Property owners will have to be notified and those types of things. It wasn't terribly hard in the residential B to change from the residential B into the number of units that were allowed. But BGA also has the same specifications as a residential B. And some of those things are gonna be a lot more confusing once we look at that on what those owners of those properties want. So, by first changing the names, we figured it would be much simpler then to go back and at the uses. The staff, CD staff has already gone through and we've inventoried all the properties in town that have more than duplexes on their properties. So, we've gone back and looked at all those because some of those zones, if we change and add another zone that allows either fourplexes or sixplexes or that type of thing, we'll have to add another zone. At this point in time, we didn't put it in there 'cause there's nothing to name as an R3. So, we just made a placemaker for that, or left it there. So, at this time, I just wanted to get a little direction to ask you if that's okay, if we just change those names. It still will require an ordinance, but we aren't changing any uses. So, there wouldn't have to be property owners that would have to be notified because their uses of their property are not changed. Just the name, the designation, as they are in the ordinance right now. And I think that's all I have to, you know.
Any, any concerns or? Mr. Bailey?
Is, is the R1, 2, 3, 4 more consistent with like national standards and that type of stuff?
Mayor, yes, that is, that is the reason that we're doing that. Most of the places in the state that we looked at, that is the way they designate. Now, they can be, they're slightly different, but they basically start with R for residential and then, and then some designation after that, 1, 2, 3, 4, A, B, C. But I mean, it's, it's basically, it starts with an R, so you know it's a residential zone. And that is actually nationwide, too. So, that's the reason we wanted to change those names.
So, I see on PUD, you didn't put an R in front of that.
We did not. Planned unit development, and I believe planned unit development can be either residential or commercial, so we did not change that.
Okay.
For that reason.
Mr. Bailey?
Our, our commercial zones are all gonna be C, again, 1, 2, 3, whatever.
Your Honor, yes, those, those will remain the same as they are. We will not change the commercial zoning designations. All we're gonna change is just the residential, so then it is more consistent.
So, at some time in the future, we expect to see a city ordinance?
If that is your wish, Your Honor.
We're okay? We're okay with that?
Okay, then you will.
Item number 15 that we just added is the Riverview Road Asphalt Overlay Project Discussion. City Administrators Report, please.
Yes, Your Honor, we added this. We got contacted by the county. Back, the city of Riverton and Fremont County entered an MOU for this Riverview Road project on, signed on January 8th, 2016. But the MOU didn't specify the actual dollar amount, because at the time, we didn't know what it was. So, they're requesting that, they're gonna send to a denim to us, to that MOU, which states that the city's share of the project will not exceed $430,000. So, we just wanted to get, run that past the council and get a motion. That was in the staff report that Mr. Butterfield put together on March 15th, 2016. The budget impact was that it will be approximately $430,000 paid for out of the 1%. So, we just wanna get a motion from the council, so when that addendum comes in, we'll review it to make sure it met the motion and then sign it and give it back to the county.
Yeah, it goes from Augusta Drive to, I think, the end of the oil, huh? They're gonna do quite a, quite an upgrade on Riverview.
Your Honor.
Mr.
I guess my question would be, they've got that bid and accepted, why do we not have a final, finite number that we know what it's gonna be then?
Mr. Butterfield?
Your Honor, we do have a finite number. When the bids were opened, we share a certain percentage of the road, as you remember, that .6 miles between Country Club and Augusta. Based off of the line items, it was determined that, from the budget summary, the cost for our improvement, our share, was $407,000, $570. We inflated that by 3% up to $430,000 to cover any potential change orders and then also to cover any potential incentives. There's a potent, there's an incentive into this contract for hot plants, hot plant mix usage. And so, with those variables in place, we inflated it a certain percentage. It was 3% that added $12,000, which brought us up to that $430,000 mark. So, while we do have a fixed number based off of the bid opening for our percentage, we had to inflate a little bit to cover any unforeseen construction costs or any incentives that would have to be paid out.
And so, a question that I have is, then this locks us in at 430. If it goes, not to exceed. I entertain a motion to that effect?
Your Honor, I would make a motion that we accept the amendment to the MOU with Fremont County Road Department.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Next item is Council Committee Reports and Council Members Roundtable. Ms. Gibbon, have you got anything for us tonight?
Just that the Endowment Board and the Senior Board did come to an agreement as far as the new agreement for the Senior Center. Unfortunately, I've had to kinda push it off for a little bit 'cause of family emergencies. And so, we will be meeting hopefully next Tuesday to pay bills from the Endowment. And then the following Tuesday, I'll be bringing that in front of council for approval of the amendment. And then we'll have it all signed and good to go. So, once you guys get it, if you have any questions, feel free to call me or text me or something.
Okay. Mr. Peterson?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Larson? Mr. Bailey?
Yes, I did attend the Force Committee meeting and they sort of were getting a plan together for what all projects we have coming this summer. Needless to say, they've been doing a good job in getting some additional streets and those projects going. Again, the 1% sales tax numbers are down considerably from 2014 and 2015. And so, our money's not quite gonna be where it was before. But again, still some money there to do some good projects on our city streets. Hopefully, save a little bit of that for the North Federal Project. And then also, I attended the Airport Board Meeting where, of course, we discussed that we have got the approved Denver Air Connections flights. And the flyroof.com website is up and going and you're able to purchase tickets starting with flights July 1. And so, that's a neat addition. And we talked about, you know, adding some things to the website to help people familiarize themselves with the procedures that'll be required to be on that flight, so. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Canaan, have you got anything? Mr. Martinez?
Yes, Your Honor, the Recreation Board Meeting of School District 25 was, the meeting was supposed to be on the 2nd last night and we moved it to May 9. And on April 21st and 22nd, we had the WHAM Board of Directors Meeting. And the main object of the discussion was that, on the money that we received from the state, the legislature decided that they would do it in two increments. But they also put in a change that they could call a special session to change the distribution of the money that we get now. So, it puts the towns and cities in a real predicament because we don't know if, from one year to the next, if we're gonna get all that money, the $105 million. So, the thing is, we can hope and pray that they don't call a special session. A special session can be called by the legislature or the governor. And the feeling was that the governor wouldn't call a special session, but we don't know. And that's all I have.
Thank you. City Administrators Report?
Yes, Your Honor. Got a notice from the county. This is not a plug for the county, but I know there's people out there in Riverton that would like to serve on boards. They have a couple of boards or commissions that have some openings. The Historic Preservation Commission, the County Library Board, the County Museum Board, County Planning Commission, County Recreational Commission. And they have one for Riverton and one at large. And then the Fremont County Solid Waste Disposal District has a one-six month term, so they must've had someone that left. But I know there's people out there that would like to serve and a lot of times, those help our entire community. Also, in relation to the work session, we're proposing to cancel our work session from next week and reschedule that for the week after our regular meeting, which should be May 24th. And that's when we're gonna have our budget work session. So, if anybody's got issues with that date, so it's still on Tuesday, it's just a week after our last one. There's actually five Tuesdays in the month of May. Please let me know, otherwise we'll plan on May 24th as being our budget work session.
Okay. Thank you. I've got a couple of items that I'd like to talk about for just a minute. If you have been paying attention, you know, in the paper, there's the ad been running for the pre- eclipse meeting, which is gonna take place on May 19th. And I have been meeting with the Planning Committee for that. But I just wanted to make sure that everybody on the council is aware of what we're doing. This is really a meeting to get everybody aware of the eclipse and when it's gonna happen and the economic development opportunities that surround that. And so, this is a kind of a kickoff to that activity. And it's gonna take place at the Casino from 10:30 a.m. through 4:00 p.m., May 19th. Steven signed up and Kyle, I'm not gonna be able to make that in spite of the fact that I'm on the Planning Commission. And I just wanna make sure that if there's somebody from the city council would like to participate in this and attend the meeting, that they know about it, they could come and be part of this, this activity. They're looking for photographers? Okay?
Thanks for that plug.
Okay, all right.
Should've added like Hollywood photography, that would be epic.
Okay.
Good job.
All right, okay, so. So, what's, what's interesting is that, is that they, there's gonna be a photo contest this summer. Okay, so there's no eclipse, but there's a photo contest to find locations that would be new and interesting and exciting, okay, from which you could take a photograph. Okay?
I'll go. Tell me what the date is again.
Okay, it's May 19th. Okay, 10:30 to 4:00 p.m. All right. This is, this is, so they really are trying to get people involved in this and get them. And if you think about it, you know, they're, they're really thinking, we're gonna see 10,000 people, okay, in Fremont County. The best, statistically, the clearest skies for viewing this in August is gonna take place between Crowhart and Manita. The best chance of clear skies. And so, people are gonna come here for that. Okay, so the motels are already booking, good heavens, the, what we heard the other day was at the Event Center in Casper. You know, the parking lot at the Event Center is marked off for parking places and they are renting those parking places for the week for 300 bucks, dry camp. See, and so, and so what's gonna happen is, I mean, there will be, there will be a lot of people, you know, coming here for one thing or another. And, and so, you know, I think we have to kinda be geared up and ready for that or we'll get run over. Okay? All right, so, so you can register for this online. I'll give you this so that you can.
I'll sign you up, Holly.
Thanks.
Okay, Steven will, Steven will sign you up, okay?
We're gonna watch for you guys, thanks.
All right, we're taking care of you. Okay, all right, the other thing that I'd like to talk about for just a minute is the- All right, the other thing that I'd like to talk about for just a minute is the, is the purchase of the, of the Honor Farm property, the three hundred and two acres, and it turns out that Steve Wilson that submitted the bid was actually being backed by the Shoshone Tribe. And, and so, I, it's my understanding that he approached them, he was looking for local people who wanted to put money into this project, and the tribe is looking at, they had some money sitting in the bank, earning a three quarters of a percent interest, and gas and oil is down, and they wanted to diversify their investment portfolio, and they thought, "Man, this is a terrific opportunity." And so, they purchased the three hundred and two acres. It's not quite a done deal, but it takes a while for the state to actually get around to issuing the deed and closing it, so they are anticipating, being the owners of this, their intent is to simply turn Steve Wilson loose on this, to develop it into commercial, retail, light industrial, and residential properties. They, I met with them last Thursday, they do not intend to build a casino there, they do not intend to build tribal offices there, they simply are the money behind the deal, and they hope that they'll be able to sell one piece of that and recover their money, or most of it, in a fairly short period of time, and then they hope to hang on to the rest of it as income property, so that the businesses that buy there or build there will be leasing the land from them, and that will provide a steady revenue stream to the tribe over a long period of time. And that is, that's what they're looking at on this deal. And, and so, I'm, I, I, I had an opportunity to meet with the tribal council last week. I, I've known a couple of these guys for quite some time. I don't think they've got any ulterior motives. I think it's a, I think it's really, for them, a business deal. And they wanna be good neighbors, they committed to me that they wanna follow city zoning and city code, they wanna be good, good citizens of Riverton, they want Riverton to prosper and to be successful, and they wanna be part of that, and they think that they'll make money doing it. So, I just, I just wanted to say that. I, I've, I don't, I don't, I don't see this as a terrible negative thing. Anytime you put something out for bid, you don't have any control over who actually buys it, goes to the highest bidder. And, and they were the highest bidder. Have any questions that I could answer on that? So, I, 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 I think it's, I think it's a positive thing that, that folks that live right here in Fremont County think enough of the city of Riverton and its potential for growth, that they would invest in it. Anything else?
Yeah, your honor, I, see if I can find it here again. I lost it. Okay, I just got this email here on the, the Wyoming Legislative Panel is weighing a tax hike as revenues drop. So, they're gonna meet in Douglas next week and discuss this, but, and evidently, they're getting a lot of backlash from the people in the state, around the state of, this is not the time for a tax hike. So, I just want everybody to be informed that that's, they'll be discussing that next week. And that's all I have.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye.